Eric, settle down. There, it's Dennis the whole time anyway. That is covered up.
Good evening. Prior to the next meeting, we'll have an invocation offered by myself, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. God, in what may be our greatest time of need, please be with our government officials and their staff as they deal with the challenges of today. Give them wisdom on how to best respect everyone's voice. Father, we also ask that you give our leaders courage so that even when it's hard, they will continue to boldly represent their constituents' needs and those of the most vulnerable among us. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Briggs, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Brady.
Here.
Ms. Twine.
Here.
Mr. Meiner.
Here.
Mr. Watson.
Here.
Mr. Poole.
Here.
Mr. Harris. Mr. Harris, you're muted.
Mr. Harris, what is he?
Mr. Murray.
Is he here at all?
I see him on the...
Oh, is he?
Call.
Mr. Harris, are you out there?
Yeah, he's here.
He's here?
Justin Harris is.
Okay, has he ever been muted? I think if he's here, we probably don't need an excused absence.
Right. And Mr. Murray?
He's muted also.
Yes.
Great. I think we got them all.
Yeah.
Commissioner.
Answer the roll call.
Commissioners, you have before the minutes of our meeting of August 10th, 2020. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Watt.
I move that we accept the minutes from the August 10th meeting in dispense with the formal reading.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Once again, we're holding this Sandusky City Commissioning electronically. Commissioners and staff are in attendance through an Internet hookup in a variety of safe locations. We've asked our audience to either submit their questions or their comments in writing to our commission clerk. We will answer those that pertain to legislation as that legislation comes before us, as well as provide a response to other audience questions from the appropriate staff. I'd also like to acknowledge the fact that those participating in this meeting are doing so with the appropriate distancing and face masks. Would also ask my fellow commissioners that are with us electronically if they will honor the, what I'm going to call, the two-second rule. That means after someone is done speaking, give them a couple of seconds before you start speaking. This electronic business is wonderful things when it works, but when it does not, it is very jumbled up. And if we just have a little space between comments and to voices, I think it'll make a lot more clarity for us and for everyone at home also. Ms. Briggs, are there any questions from the public that pertain to the night's agenda?
There are. We have from three individuals. Starting with Ms. Sharon Johnson at 1139 Fifth Street. In regards to item three, she asks, "It seems that the lease is staying the same but only changing the tenant's name. I'm concerned about rolling over the same lease when the city has no idea what investments will go in. What will be the restrictions and input pertaining to any future construction?" In regards to item eight, she asks, "A new development on Market Street will receive a free alleyway paid for by the taxpayers. Why are the taxpayers paying 100% of the cost when other paved alleyways, the property owner picks up 50% and the city 50% of the cost?" In regards to item nine, Ms. Johnson asks, "Why is the city installing a 20-inch water line? Why such a large line?" We have several items from Mr. Tim Schwanger. In regards to item three, he asks, "What role did the city manager and staff have in negotiating the consent agreement between the two parties? How many marinas and public parks are managed or owned by Maruus Brothers? Did the city manager, staff, and the ex officio mayor negotiate with Maruus Brothers allowing future private development within the complete boundaries of Battery Park, including the former City Hall site, skate park, tennis courts, parking lot, et cetera? The dollar figure related to the lease figure, or the lease transfer agreement between Sandusky Bay Investment and Maruus Brothers should be subject to public open records." In regards to item five, the change order, he said, "There have been a number of after-the-fact repairs and issues with the pier. The squealing swings still need repaired, the great lawn needed partial dirt fill, and the grass reseeding, among other issues. Were these issues addressed under free warranty work?" In regards to item nine, he asks, "The increase in price of $19,000 is due to a decision. Water flow and supply needs on Meg Street north of Washington Street are insufficient. No development has taken place on Meg Street north of Washington Street in decades." Additional water sewer work lends itself to the belief future private development of Battery Park is being planned. Finally, from Mr. Thomas Lamarka, he said, "I would appreciate you giving a second glance at putting all of your properties under the control of one development company, namely the Maruus Brothers, that are currently involved in the building apartments above City Hall and storefronts, the Pike Building apartments and/or commercial rentals, and now handing them Battery Park Marina through the lease assignment. I did read where you cannot stand in the way of an assignment, but this draws so many questions. I also, or I think it's also important for the city residents to know what the amount of lease income to the city is for this property known as Battery Park Marina." He says, "I tried to find the income without success, unlike the Owens Sound Agreement for the lease of dockage space for the Pele Island boats that shows $800,000 to the city over the term of the lease. I believe Maruus Brothers have lots of vacancies in the city, and I'm not hearing a lot of bragging of signed leases for future occupancy of the Pike Building. I also believe Charlie Murray has more experience managing a marina than the Maruus Brothers." In regards to item number five, he said, "I question the amounts for custom design costs of fenders at $69,901, mooring posts and bumpers at another $11,435, and then the $5,188 for the design of the mooring posts and bumpers. The custom design, whatever, is for $99,150.75, and then some custom construction, I'm assuming, for the building of $192,939.75. This seems like an awful lot of money for a little bit of work and some bumpers. Unbelievable. I realize it also includes the building, but wow. Is there more work for the Jackson Street Pier now in the pipeline to accommodate ships?" That concludes items pertaining to the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Briggs. Commissioner, I think now we'll turn to Commissioner Twine to read a proclamation on driving sober.
Yes, thank you, Commission President. As we all know, this time of year, we have a drive-sober-or-get-pulled-over campaign. So just want to remind everyone about the law enforcement being out in force during the holiday. So the proclamation reads as, "Whereas from October 26th through September 7th, 2020, law enforcement nationwide will be joining the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration in the high-visibility drive-sober-or-get-pulled-over campaign, and whereas officers in the Sandusky Police Department will show zero tolerance for drunk driving, and whereas although it is illegal in all 50 states, the District of Columbia and Puerto Rico to drive drunk or having a blood alcohol concentration of .08 or higher. Far too many people across the nation get behind the wheel after consuming too much alcohol. And whereas every year, more than one-third, or 38%, of all motor vehicle traffic deaths involve drivers who were drunk, and holidays like Labor Day are particularly dangerous. And whereas drunk driving takes a particularly heavy toll among young drivers, and whereas research has shown that high-visibility enforcement, like the drive-sober-or-get-pulled-over campaign, reduces drunk-driving fatalities by as much as 20%. And by joining this nationwide effort, Sandusky's roadways will be made safer for everyone throughout the Labor Day period. And whereas the Sandusky Police Department wants to remind everyone, getting behind the wheel drunk is a terrible idea, as it impairs your ability to operate a vehicle safely, impairs your judgment and good sense about whether you can or should drive, and whereas driving drunk is simply not worth the risk. Now therefore, I, Naomi Twine of the Sandusky City Commission, do hereby proclaim and announce August 26th through September 7th, 2020, as don't pay, enjoy the Labor Day holiday, drive sober or get pulled over, weeks in the city of Sandusky, and urge all citizens to travel safely, dated this 24th day of August, 2020. Thank you."
Thank you, Commissioner Twine. Commissioners, you have before you several communications from staff recommending various legislation. Have a motion to accept these communications.
So move.
Second.
Been a motion and a second? Discussion? Without objection, that motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Commissioner, we have three consent items to consider this evening on our consent agenda. Do any of you wish to move any of these items to the regular agenda? Ms. Briggs, will you present the consent agenda?
I was almost finished with it by the time you mentioned that.
I thought you were using the 30-second rule.
Okay, here we go. Item A is an acquisition of one parcel through the land bank program. Item B is a purchase and sale of one parcel through the land bank program. And item C is a change order for time extension to city-owned fiber extensions to the Amtrak Station for Transit Operations Projects.
Having heard these resolutions and ordinances, Commissioners, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine.
I move to accept the consent agenda items A through C in declaring that all ordinances and/or resolutions as drafted and presented to the City Commission under the consent agenda shall take effect in accordance with the section reflected in the ordinances and/or resolutions, whether it be in accordance with Section 13 or Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
There been a motion and a second? Discussion? Ms. Briggs, will you call the roll on the motion, please?
Yes. Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meiner?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Now on the ordinances and resolution.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meiner?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Now on the ordinances and resolution.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meiner?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That resolution and those ordinances are passed. We will now turn to our regular agenda items, of which there are 10. Ms. Briggs, will you present item number one, please?
Yes, Mr. President. And from what I understand, from looking at past minutes, the fiscal officer certificate needs to, a motion and a roll call is needed before we present the ordinances, those items.
And we will do that for items A, B, and C, and we'll then full-ball vote for each of those. So I would ask that, I would ask for a motion to accept the fiscal officer's certificate for item A.
So move.
Second.
Motion, is there a second?
Second, second.
Been a motion and a second? Discussion? There's been a motion and a second, hearing no objection, that motion will be approved. And hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Item B, motion to accept the fiscal officer's certificate.
So move.
Second.
Been a motion and a second? Discussion? Without objection, that motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Item B, motion to accept the fiscal officer's certificate.
So move.
Second.
Been a motion and a second? Discussion?
I think you had a right.
Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Item C, motion to accept the fiscal officer's certificate.
So move.
Second.
Been a motion and a second? Discussion? Without objection, that motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Now, Ms. Briggs, I believe it is you will present item number one.
Item 1A is an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of $3,800,000 in notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of, one, revitalizing the bayfront, urban revitalization area by acquiring, sharing, and improving certain properties in that area, undertaking the environmental cleanup and remediation of certain properties in that area, constructing road improvements and related utility and infrastructure improvements in that area, and otherwise improving that area. Two, acquiring a ladder truck for the fire department. Three, acquiring salt trucks for the street department. Four, paying the cost of various improvements for the landing as more further described and approve an ordinance number 18-127. And five, paying costs associated with the relocation of City Hall, including but not limited to those projects approved by ordinance number 18-119, 18-128, and 18-129, and resolution number 025-18R, declaring an emergency.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules and full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second. Is anybody else?
Been a motion and a second? Discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
Just a question with regard to the number one on there, revitalizing the bayfront, urban revitalization, that. Is there more to be done there, or is what we've done what we're done with that? And that's what this money's paying for, for work that's already completed, or is there other things planned? And what are they?
Should I, I would think I would perhaps turn, I'm not sure if I should turn to Ms. Reader, if I should turn to Eric and Twine for that question. Perhaps, should Ms. Reader, if you could give us an explanation, I think I know what the answer is, but I would be much more comfortable hearing your answer to that question. And perhaps Mr. Klain will weigh in after you give us an idea of exactly what your take is on it.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. President. What this is, is for various purpose notes that were issued in 2019 that we're rolling over into new notes in 2020. The Bayfront Urban Revitalization was a project that was done back in 2004. So this project, as far as I am concerned, is something that's been completed. These are just notes that we've had on our books since then. And Mr. Klain or probably Eric Wilksor could address, you know, further projects if there are any, but I'm not aware of anything else further out there.
It seems very logical to me, Ms. Reader, and I believe your answer is that these are projects that were completed some time ago, we're simply rolling the notes over for them now, so it is not ongoing work. Additional discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I'd like to ask through you, Ms. Reader, whether these are, whether we're keeping these in one-year notes, or whether, given the historically low bond rates, we're putting this into long-term permanent financing and not having to revisit these next year this time. Thank you.
Through you, Commission President, to Commissioner Murray. So the intent is, at this point, to just do a one-year note, again, realizing that, you know, the rates will be low, but we do have a lot of miscellaneous projects that we hope in one year's term will be able to clean up and look at doing longer financing as some of these projects that we're going to be rolling in, in addition to the notes that we had last year, are for the pathway and Jackson Street Pier. And so we have alternate financing coming in the short future where we didn't want to bond this out longer term.
Thank you, Ms. Reader. Additional discussion? Ms. Briggs, will you call the roll on the motion?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meiner?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meiner?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Briggs, will you present item B, please?
Item 1B is an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of notes in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $2,130,000 in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying costs of various improvements to the Jackson Street Pier and declaring an emergency.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Watson?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance, B, under the suspension of the rules and full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second? Discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
Same question as before. Are we done with Jackson Street Pier? Does this money cover it, or is there something else that we're, we plan to do that this money either does or doesn't cover?
Through you, Commission President, to Commissioner Poole, this is Michelle. You'll find on, later on in our agenda tonight, we do have a change order for Jackson Street Pier, and at this time, there is nothing further anticipated for Jackson Street Pier, so this should be covering it.
Thank you.
Additional discussion? Ms. Briggs, will you call the roll on the motion?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meiner?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meiner?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Briggs, will you present item 1C, please?
Yes. Item 1C is an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of notes in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $2,140,000 in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying costs of various improvements to the Jackson Street Pier and declaring an emergency.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Watson?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance, B, under the suspension of the rules and full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second? Discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
Same question as before. Are we done with Jackson Street Pier? Does this money cover it, or is there something else that we're, we plan to do that this money either does or doesn't cover?
Through you, Commission President, to Commissioner Poole, this is Michelle. You'll find on, later on in our agenda tonight, we do have a change order for Jackson Street Pier, and at this time, there is nothing further anticipated for Jackson Street Pier, so this should be covering it.
Thank you.
Additional discussion? Ms. Briggs, will you call the roll on the motion?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meiner?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Briggs, will you present item 1C, please?
Yes. Item 1C is an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of notes in an aggregate principal not to exceed the amount of $2,140,000 in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying costs of various improvements to the Sandusky Bay pathway and declaring an emergency.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules and full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
There been a motion and a second? Discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
On this one, I need some, just some discussion on various improvements to Sandusky Bay Pathway. Just refresh our memory, what exactly, the boundaries and what are we, what are we going to have to show for it at the end? And is this all the money it's going to take to complete this?
Ms. Reader, did you understand that question?
Yes, I did. Thank you, Commission President.
All right, Ms. Reader, and you probably can't explain it because you just count the money. I'm interested in what the Sandusky Bay pathway, in terms of this money, what it is paying for. A description that talks about where along the pathway and what the improvements are that we're talking about there. We, that's what I need, and I don't think you have it. Someone else, it's perhaps engineer else would have that information.
Through the Commission President and Director Klain, please jump in with more detail. But I believe that the portions of this, the pathway that are in these notes are related to the design and engineering of the landing park, and then the first phase of the pathway that runs all the way. And actually, that's in the first note, and then the additional is the design and engineering for the entirety of the rest of the city outside of the first phase that goes from Cedar Point Drive to the landing. And one of the things that is important to note is that these, and while they're being issued as short-term notes now, will eventually be taken out by the Cedar Point TIF that is on the indoor sports center phase, in which they've agreed by contract to pay at least $550,000 a year, although we know it will come in at a higher rate than that over time as property values go up. And so these are short-term notes now because we have to pay for the design work that's taking place, so we can get those to be shovel-ready. But then I believe it is next year when those payments will first kick in on a full-year basis for the Cedar Point TIF. And what Director Reader has said is, for getting a better bond rating, it might be better to let those collect for a year or two, and then ultimately to use that revenue stream to basically pay down the entirety of these notes and pay back the capital fund for that portion of it. So outside of the Whitman-Weber portion, that was actually for the completed portion of Shoreline Drive, this is for the design and engineering, if you look at the totality of item one, for the entire design and engineering of the city's pathway, or for the entirety of the city limits. Mr. Poole, another question?
Yeah. Essentially, the, where's the money coming from to actually do the building of this pathway?
So through Commissioner, or Commission President Brady to Commissioner Poole, the pathway is being funded in phases. We've already funded the Shoreline Drive section of it as part of the Shoreline Drive project. We have already funded the Meg Street portion of it as part of the reconstruction of Meg Street. We've already funded the Venice Road portion of that as part of the reconstruction of Venice Road, as part of the West Side walkability and the utility project taking place there. The vast majority of the funding, although we don't have that ironed out yet, for the entirety of the landing and the phase that will run from the landing to Cedar Point Drive will be paid for by the remainder of the Cedar Point TIF. And what that would leave, that would have to be looked toward for future projects, is that section of First Street that runs to connect Meg Street to Cedar Point Drive, and then everything west of Amvets until you get to Venice. So those would be the two only unfunded pieces at this point, but through this TIF and then the already other funded, already funded portions will have about 70% to 75% of the entirety of the city covered, and then be looking for future grants, et cetera, to close those gaps over time.
I'm sorry, you said a lot, the, what portion again is unfunded? And I'm really only interested in the eastern end of this, dealing around the landing and Cedar Point. What part's not funded yet?
Sure, sure. We're looking at, and I think is later in this application, we have a $6 million application into ODOT that would cover the remainder of that project, including Landing Park itself. But so basically, we'll have nine, after we've paid back all of the engineering and design for the entirety of the pathway, and paid out the portion that goes towards the infrastructure for the indoor Cedar Point Sports Center, we'll have somewhere between $9 to $11 million as a down payment on the entirety of that project. And we'll be looking to use that to construct either the pathway, or alternatively, if we get a grant for the pathway, to put that towards the construction of Landing Park itself.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, on this, this particular issue, the, that we're voting on, it's, I'm on board since the, the TIF at Cedar Point is going to pay for the design. I am not on board with the design of the pathway on the eastern end. There's not enough benefit to the citizens to spend this kind of money on what up to now has been projected, bridges across Pipe Creek, perhaps a bridge at First Street, and then trying to put another bridge behind city building. I'm just not on board for it. I ride bicycles a lot of places. There's nowhere in the world we can ever find this. And that's what I, it, that's where, where I'm going to draw the line going down, down the line. What's been planned up to now that gets you to the property where we have to cross Pipe Creek, that's fine to do. It's more expensive than what it would cost had it been run along the right-of-way on Cleveland Road. It's an amenity we're going to put in, and if, it'll be a difficult sell for me when you get to start building all these extra bridges. But it is okay, because we can go right back over to Cleveland Road at, there at the property at Cedar Point's, at the hotel, and go back to Cleveland Road, come around to get to Cedar Point driveway. And that is something that I think is wise to do, long-term. Likewise, going down First Street, if you're going all the way, if you're going First Street to Megs to run a bike path, that's a prudent thing to do. If you're, if you've got a wing that slides off toward the water before it gets to, behind the cove, that's fine. Spend a lot of money on litigation and arguing over, and paying for a lot of easements for something that is, is of minimal value in adding to the, to the experience of people. We have a lot of waterfront that we're, you're going to get to see, and spending millions of dollars trying to, trying to add another 600 yards to put a path next to the water seems, doesn't make sense to me. So, then I'll have to say it again, you've heard where I, where I stand on this overall project. The rest of it very, seems to be doing very well.
Additional discussion, Commissioners. Ms. Briggs, we call, roll on the motion.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Briggs, we present item number 2, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Item number 2 is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a purchase and sale agreement for the purchase of real property located at 2132 Parkview Boulevard, Sandusky, and identified as parcel number 58-00328.000 for the purpose of blight elimination and demolition, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Poole.
Just a discussion from the, Mr. Lasko, about what this is about, why we're doing it now. I've already expressed to him my concerns about it.
Mr. Lasko, I wonder if you could answer concerns that Mr. Poole has.
Yes. Through you, Mr. President, to Commissioner Poole, and the balance of the commission. Just as some background, I think everyone's well aware of our initiative within the MacArthur Park area to try to strategically acquire and demolish properties within that area, ultimately leading up to a, a planning process that we would love to go through with stakeholders and existing residents on revisioning that community sometime in the near future. This would be the next property on the list, which is a four-unit property on the south end of Parkview Boulevard that we are proposing to acquire and ultimately demolish for $45,000. I do want to acknowledge, we've bought and brought several properties to this commission for consideration. This would be, from a gross acquisition standpoint, the highest for a per-property acquisition price, but in line with what we have purchased on a per-unit basis. It's actually not the highest per-unit we have brought to commission for consideration. This would be $11,250 per unit. And two meetings ago, we did approve one for $12,500 per unit. Ultimately, what we would look to do is to acquire this property and then immediately espas, sebate, and demolish. And I do want to point out as well, in our annual action plan through Community Development Block Grant that was approved by commission in the spring of 2020, we specifically set aside acquisition funds for the purchase of property in MacArthur Park. So this is being fully funded through CDBG for an activity that was approved at the commission level. So this, these aren't funds that we can allocate, for example, to personnel, et cetera. And then, just lastly, in closing, I, I know it's been brought up certainly by Commissioner Poole at last meeting about us being aggressive in acquisition activities when there's sort of no perceived interest from others in the market. I didn't make a mention of this last meeting, but that's actually not the case. Just two weeks ago, there was a four-unit that sold for $66,000, which is $16,500. And we also lost seven units across two properties at the beginning of the year. So we're trying to be strategic. We're trying to develop relationships with property owners there so that when they ultimately look to sell, they reach out to the city. But we also understand that there is a limit to what is reasonable and prudent for us to do, which is why we did not bring or act on some of those other properties in the past. But there is interest in the market, and we believe this current acquisition falls within the ranges that have been established by commission to staff from an acquisition on a per-unit basis.
Thank you, Mr. Lasko. Discussion.
Yeah.
Ms. Poole.
Anybody else? I'll wait. No one? Okay.
Hi, Mr. Lasko, I, I want to compliment you on this, putting this deal together. I do understand it's a four-unit, and I understand it's $11,000 some odd dollars per unit. I owned quite a few units in MacArthur Park back literally 50 years ago. And we always felt like if we were buying them for $10,000 apiece, it was a good deal. Here we are 50 years later, and we're still buying them for $11,000 apiece. I believe that you have to strike when, when the property's available. And how foolish would we feel if someone in the open market picks this piece of property up and renovates it, and then is in our way of a, of a real development for that entire area? Because we've got an investor now who wants $20,000 a unit. So I believe this is a good deal. I believe it fits with, with the plan for that area. And I commend you for, for putting the deal together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Poole.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we just have a difference of opinion on what's likely to be a, a good deal. These properties are not likely to go up in, go up in value significantly. The, we do not have a use for it, and may not have for five, 10 years. In fact, a significant investment by a developer there will probably not come until the potential brownfield across the street is developed into something. I mean, we have much land in this community. We already own property that is very nice at Coal Creek, and we're not, and we, and could not find a developer to develop that, and it doesn't require a lot. So I would suggest that all we are doing, and this, this property has sold six times in the last 20 years. There's only so much you can do with it. And for four property, those four individual places to be worth the money that you're suggesting it is, I would point out that two of them are condemned. So when we're talking about closing the fire department, laying people off, losing staff, and then you'd say, well, we're, it's, I recognize Mr. Lasko's job is to make deals. So when he gets up in the morning, he needs to do something, he does have to produce something. And yes, maybe someplace down the line, if you were to say, I've got a developer that said, we're going to try and do A, B, C, or D, if you can get all these properties, it would be a different story. But as you saw, they are, let's, along Perkins Ave, some along Camp Street, are already being put to better use by people that are rented, they're being rented. And so this concept of we're, we're buying a property that is just expense to us, we're going to pay to tear it down, we're going to have to then pay $200 every 10 days to cut the grass, and the property will not be any, worth any more or less when we, when it's time to buy it. We're not, we're not, just not a hit. And we're, we're, I don't think it's, this is a good use of our money. There's so many things in this community that we could spend the CDBG money on. And so I'm just going to vote no on this.
Additional discussion, Commissioners. Ms. Briggs, we call the roll on the motion.
Yes, Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
No.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Briggs, we present item number 3, please.
Item number 3 is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute the consent agreement to a sign relating to the Battery Park and Battery Park Marina property, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Waddington.
I move for the adoption, move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
And a motion and a second? Discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Waddington.
I'll do the two-second. I met with the city manager this morning, and he answered a lot of the questions that I had heard out in the public. And I was going to ask Mr. Webster, maybe you can relay what we discussed this morning, clear it up a little bit.
Through the Commission President, to Commissioner Waddington and other commissioners in the community, and Matt Lasko would probably be great to jump in on this at some point as he has helped pull together the terms of this legislation. But that being said, we just want to make it absolutely clear that all that is being proposed tonight is a transfer of the existing lease, which the current operators, or Sandusky Invest, Sandusky Bay Invest, I can't remember the exact name of the, the LLC or whatever that, that runs the marina today, I apologize for that, but that the current owners are selling their rights to the lease to a third party, who in this case happens to be the Marouse Development Group under the name of an LLC that they have set up. It doesn't give the new operators of the lease any additional rights than what had historically been there. So there's no reason that they could do something that the current operators would have been unable to do. But, but it also is very clear in the lease agreement that the city cannot withhold its approval of a lease transfer for, for no significant reasons. And so, that being said, we're happy to answer any additional questions that folks have. But tonight, the only thing that's happening is a lease that is legally allowed to be transferred, is being transferred, and it is our role to approve that transfer, or the city commission's role to approve that transfer, and staff is bringing this to them for their consideration of that.
Thank you, Mr. Webster. I wonder if I could, I wonder if I could bring our, our interim law director into this discussion. Mr. Harris, are you out there?
Yes, sir.
I, I wonder if you could just share with us our, our legal position regarding this. I, I understand what Mr. Webster's saying, but I think, I would like it read into the record that our law director is advising us that seems to be some question as to why this ends up as a piece of emergency legislation. I think the most obvious reason is because we really don't have any alternatives here. A month of, of discussing this, or a month of rumors flying around about what is exactly going to go on down there, is not going to change our, our legal standing. And if that is the case, I wonder if you'd just share with us what the law is on, number one, our ability to decline to allow this to be transferred. And number two, I would like you to share with us our ability or our inability to alter that lease in any way.
Thank you, Commission President. Through you, Commission President, to the commission and to the general public. Commercial leases, basically, they're designed to be long-term. They're not like the typical leases that folks who may rent are accustomed to, like a one-year lease, month-to-month lease. And when you have development taking place at a property such as Battery Park, most lease, lease agreements, you know, are 30 to 40 years, and they have rights to extensions. So the commission that was president in 1985 thought it was a, a good business decision to enter to this lease agreement with the developers at the time. Just like you folks, if you guys, you know, execute long-term leases, your decisions impact stuff, you know, 40, 30, 34 years down the road. This particular lease basically provides that we cannot, you know, unreasonably or arbitrarily impede the right of an assignment. And I think there was an assignment to a different company years, years ago. But with that said, so long as someone's going to continue to use the property for what has been, you know, spelled out in the lease, the, the city, we cannot, you know, arbitrarily prevent that assignment. The other question you asked is, why is it done in emergency? I mean, there's lots of reasons why it, it, the legislation's being passed on emergency. The one that comes to mind to me is that you are basically assigning a marina to another entity. For those folks who are familiar with boating, I think around this time right now is when people are reserving docks and, and preparing for next summer. So under our, you know, Section 14 of our City Charter, we have the right to preserve, you know, public use of property. And I think for continuity's sake, I think it should be passed on emergency. I don't know what purpose a 30-day referendum or two readings would do, but just to impede, you know, that the subsequent owners are able to continue the use of the property moving forward. But 9.3 of the lease agreement, I think there's been a bunch of citizens who requested, you know, copies of this through, through public records. But our, I guess our teeth would be that, once it gets assigned to a subsequent developer and/or tenant, that they have to continue to use the property for park, public fish and restaurant, recreation and marine facilities. And, and speaking with Eric and the folks, I believe that's what Marouse's intentions are at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. I'm going to ask Commission Clerk Spriggs if she would read the questions from the public that pertain to this piece of legislation. And I just want to be absolutely certain that staff can answer those questions, or that, or that perhaps we've already answered them. But if you would, if you would read those three or four questions, Ms. Briggs, one at a time, I'd like to reach out to staff and make sure we've got, we've got answers on the record for those.
Sure. Through you, Mr. President. The first question was, it seems that the lease is staying the same but only changing the tenants' names. I'm concerned about rolling over the same lease when the city has no idea what improvements will go in. What will be the restrictions and input pertaining to any future construction?
Thank you, Ms. Briggs. I'd like, I'd like to parse these out one at a time if I can, Ms. Briggs. And I would turn to Mr. Lasko, I think is most appropriate, perhaps staff, to answer that question.
Yes, to you, Mr. President, and I may at the very end defer to the city manager. But as mentioned, this is a simple assignment that will basically allow Sandusky Bay Investment Company to convey all their rights, responsibilities, liabilities to the new entity, Battery Park Sandusky LLC. This will not alter any of the baseline terms or existing terms of the lease agreement, nor will it extend the length of the lease. There will be no alterations to rental payments, et cetera. Everything will ultimately stay the same. And I think as the interim law director has stated, a, a lessee requesting an assignment of a lease does not therefore then open the door for a renegotiation of other terms of the lease. That would only be when there's an expiration of the lease or we're under negotiation on a new lease. As it relates to potential future development, I'll ultimately defer to the city manager. But as it's currently written, the, the new entity But as it's currently written, the new entity would have to do what is in the lease, which is marina, recreational, restaurant uses, and other business and related uses that have associations to those permitted uses. So with that, I'll turn things over to the city manager if he has anything else to add.
I think Mr. Webster's been very clear on that, you know, earlier in his, in his presentation. Ms. Briggs, would you present the question, the next question?
Through you, Mr. President. The next one was, I would appreciate you giving a second glance at putting all of your properties under the control of one development company, namely the Marouse Brothers, that are currently involved in the building apartments above the city hall and storefronts, the site building apartments and/or commercial rentals, and now handing them the Battery Park Marina through the lease assignment. I did read where you cannot stand in the way of an assignment, but this draws so many questions. I think it's also important for the city residents to know what the amount of lease income is to the city for this property known as Battery Park Marina. I tried to find the income without success, unlike the Owens Sound Agreement for the lease of dockage space for the Pele Island boats that shows $800,000 coming to the city over the term of the lease. I believe Marouse Brothers have vacancies in the city. I'm not hearing bragging of signed leases for the future occupancy of the site building.
I think I can answer the early part of that, that question. And as regards to the city putting all of their eggs in one basket, let's be clear that the city played no role in, in putting this marriage together. This is an agreement between two LLCs, perhaps two corporations, however, they're held legally. But the city is not making marriages out of these people. They are, they are grownups. They are in this for profit. And this is a deal between Marouse and the owners of Battery Park. The city is not bequesting our property to developers. And to me, it doesn't matter if one developer has one property or 100 of them. If they're willing to invest the millions of dollars such as the Marouse team has in this city, I will continue, I do welcome them, will continue to welcome them. As to the value of the lease, anyone on staff have that information?
Through the commission president, to the rest of the commission. I think Matt Lasco was looking that up earlier today. I don't have the numbers. Do you have that, Matt?
Yes. Through you, Mr. President, to commission. So I didn't specifically detail in my communication any budgetary impact because there is no new or altered budgetary impact. The existing baseline rents will continue to be paid. But to add a little clarity to that, there is a base rent payment of $30,000 that will continue to be paid for years 30 through 40. And then also 2% of gross operational income is also paid to the city. Michelle Reader, our finance director, mentioned earlier today that for last year, that was $21,000 and change. I will note there's other ancillary revenues that come to the city due to the marinas such as a boat tax, dock tax, and/or submerged land lease payments. But those are outside of the lease. So for the pure lease, it is $30,000 base payment plus 2% of gross income, which last year was just over $21,000.
Thank you, Mr. Lasco. Ms. Briggs, next question.
And finally, there are a couple of questions in relation to this one. But what role did the city manager and staff have in negotiating the consent agreement between the two parties? How many marinas and public parks are managed or owned by Marouse Brothers? Did the city manager, staff, and the ex officio mayor negotiate with Marouse Brothers allowing future private development within the complete boundaries of Battery Park, including the former city hall site, skate park, tennis court, parking lot, et cetera? And finally, the dollar figure related to the lease transfer agreement between Sandusky Bay Investment and Marouse Brothers should be subject to public open records?
Who wants to take a step?
This is, Matt, I can take on most of those. Just to answer a few of those questions, the consent agreement that is in front of commission for consideration was actually obviously vetted by city and our law department. So we were very involved in consideration of the consent agreement that is in front of commission tonight for consideration. Secondarily, I do think the question about Marouse and their history and marina management is a fair question. So I will let folks know, Marouse Development Group is already in agreement with a company called Oasis, who is a national marina management company out of the Maryland area. They have marinas all over the United States, including two in Ohio, in Lorain, in North Coast Harbor in Cleveland. So Marouse will be manager, will be contracting out the management of the marina to a very well, very well-known national organization called Oasis. No different than an apartment building owner having a property manager to lease and market their apartments. This is a very similar structure. Thirdly, and I don't know if the law director would like to weigh in, I don't know that the, a document, in this instance, a real estate and business asset purchase agreement between, between two private parties is actually subject to public record. But I'll ultimately defer to the interim law director on that.
Through you, Commission President, in follow-up to Matt Lasco in the question, that is correct. The agreement between two private entities is not subject to disclosure under public records. It could be a dollar, it could be a billion dollars. We are not privy to that agreement. So it's, really has no bearing on the city's part.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. And only because I did hear my, my title mentioned in that last question, being known that the ex officio mayor played no role in negotiating this marriage between these two entities, I was advised by staff that there were negotiations going on, but I played no role in, in how those came together or how they culminated. I am pleased that they happened, I can tell you that. Additional questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman? Yeah. You indicated before that the staff had no, already, you already indicated that the staff had no role in putting this together at all. So that, that answer, that question was answered by you earlier. Law Director, there's been a lot said. Would you just take a moment now, while people have a chance to absorb, and just talk for a moment to the public about what the lease allows these, the leasing to do with regard to construction or whatever? Because that's really the sticking point. And the community's not well, there's, there's lots of rumors going around about what's, what we're trying to do or not trying to do. And so if you would take a moment to just read the section of the lease that applies to what these folks can do with this. I know you mentioned it earlier, but it was in a lot of other stuff you said. So just take a moment and then expound on what that, what it means in terms of public understanding. Perhaps this will not be as big a problem for us going forward.
Through you, Commission Poole, through you, Commission President. The use of the premises is spelled out in the lease agreement. And I'll read it for the record. And I think Matt touched on this, but it says during the term of this lease, the developer, in this case, it would be Marouse, or prior to the assignment, it would be the company that has been owned and operated by Paul and David Ringo, shall use and operate the property for and only for park, public fishing, restaurant, recreational, and marine facilities, and any commercial or business activities related or incidental thereto. So to the extent there could be other commercial or business activities related to operating a restaurant, recreational purposes, the marina facilities, public fishing, park, those activities and use of the premises can take place. It's still city-owned property. It's still leased from the city. So for example, if citizens are concerned, no one can parcel the land up and sell lots out for fee simple ownership of real estate. I don't, I think that, I don't know, is, did that kind of answer your question, Commissioner Poole?
Absolutely, just as I did when we talked earlier. Thank you. One last thing, Mr. Chairman. With regard to this being an emergency, I personally, they've had this lease for 30 years, 20 years, and then some. And this is going to extend for another, another 20 afterwards going on to 20, 24, I guess, 2044. Seems to me that we could have figured a way to do this without an emergent, without doing under emergency legislation. So I'm going to vote no on the motion, but I'll, I'll recognize that the lease has to be, we have to pass this to allow the lease to be passed on. I would suggest that as a commission, we recognize from this experience that we are sitting on something that was the will of people 25 years ago, without any regard to what's going on now or what's likely to be going on 25 years from now. And I think going forward, we need to be making those kinds of thinking deeply and having some conversation about that. 20 years on the lease is probably reasonable for us to be looking ahead. This was 60 years. And I don't, I think it was, I personally think it was a mistake to have something that, to tie up a property that we have no ability to talk about what we want to do with it until, and for 60 years. And I hope that the commission won't do that again, and we won't do it again. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Meizer?
I'd just like to speak on that for a moment. In the 70s, I kept a boat at Battery Park. They were all wooden docks, full of rubble, like stones. It was, everything was rotted downtown in that area. It was not a good place to go. There were three boats there. I had a wooden boat. There were only three boats in that marina. And I think Mr. Pfeiffer had a great vision. He stepped up and he provided an anchor down there to help spring the downtown development. If you remember, if some of you that are old enough remember that. So I don't think it was that bad of a decision for our forefathers or predecessors to, to make. They, they really set an anchor and it's been, everything's been going up since then. So I can't, I can't agree with Mr. Wesley on that one. Thank you.
Additional discussion, Commissioner? Ms. Briggs, will you call the roll on the, on the roll, a roll on the motion?
Yes, Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
No.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Briggs, will you present item number four, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Item number four is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a lease agreement with Owens Sound Transportation Company Limited for the utilization of dockage space at the Jackson Street Pier and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioner, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Twine?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Been a motion and discussion? Mr. Lasco, I know this, this piece of legislation has your name on it. I had quite a long and good discussion with Director Klein also. So either, either of you or both of you, I would appreciate if you'd chime in and explain to us that we are actually recovering these dollars over the life, the dollars that we spend, we're recovering over the life of this lease. And I will point out that this lease is dramatically shorter than the Battery Park lease.
Through you, Mr. President, this is Director Lasco. I'll start just to walk through the lease terms. Certainly, if Director Klein has anything he'd like to add, I'll defer to him. But just to provide some quick background, we have had a formal lease agreement in place since 1995 for operations of the Pele Islander. That initial lease expired in 2004, and we have brought back no less than 16 addendums between the years 2004 to 2019, with just modest alterations to the base rent amount and the hours of operation at the pier. And obviously, with all the construction that has taken place and the investments that have taken place, both sides thought it was the right time to look at negotiating a longer term lease in this instance. So what is before commission for consideration is a new seven-year lease for, that will go till 2027. During that initial term of the lease, the Pele Islander will be responsible for paying the city just over $114,000 a year for those seven years. Those are, as Director Klein can probably more eloquently describe, those, the bulk of that is for reimbursement of capital costs that went into alterations at the Jackson Street Pier. For year one, because we're late in the year, that payment will be due by November 1st. In subsequent years, two through seven, that will be due by June 1st in full. And then we did put in two, three-year renewal periods that will have to be approved by both parties should we want to continue the agreement. Those baseline rent payments will obviously severely decline to a more traditional level as to what was being, being paid by them prior to the construction. So that would start at $12,000, beginning in 2027, subject to a 3% annual escalator. So that's sort of the nuts and bolts of the lease. Certainly happy to defer to Mr. Klein if there's anything else he wants to add.
Additional, go ahead, Mr. Klein.
Can you hear? Yeah. So through you, Mr. President. So I won't touch on the portions that Mr. Lasco already did, but a couple little items that I did want to touch on is that what you'll find out under the next agenda item is that we did have a total of 779,500 that was for really the Customs and Border Protection facility, plus any improvements that were additionally requested to accommodate strictly the Pele Islander, which is going to be docked at this facility for the next seven years. The other thing I wanted to point out is that we still have the agreement with the good time to use the slip. They will be docking at the same location, and those two entities have coordinated in the past, they continue to coordinate in the future. I know that question's come up several times about how that relationship's going to work. And I want to assure everybody they do have a relationship and that they're working together to make sure that that space can be utilized by both parties. Other than that, I think the majority of the discussion that I would have related to the lease could be summed up under item number five when we talk about the next change order. But I can't answer any other questions specific to the infrastructure that is covered under this lease agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Additional discussion, Commissioner? Ms. Briggs, will you call the roll on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Briggs, will you present item number five, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Item number five is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to approve the second change order for work performed by Donleys Incorporated of Cleveland, Ohio, for the Jackson Street Pier rehabilitation project in the amount of $279,500 and zero cents, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14- Section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Waddington?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Klein, you've done a pretty good job of explaining this in your, in your last discussion on item number four. Bottom line is that we added a budget of half a million dollars and it turned out to be 779,500, and we are turning all of that into, recapturing all of that through the life of the lease. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Mr. Klein, it's also my understanding that these costs are, we're not that bad at estimating costs, but these costs are totally driven by a combination of the federal government and the Canadian government. Is that be correct?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Just, so when we, when we got these costs, we originally had $500,000 set up in the contract, but we didn't have everything that we needed from the federal government. So as we were going through it, it took the discussions and the negotiations and engaging with the Ontario government early on to talk to them and make sure that they understood what the costs were, getting them to agree to pay for the improvements, not only for the Pele Islander, but also for the Customs and Border Protection facility. So the $500,000 did grow to 779,500, but I assure you that, you know, we had detailed paperwork that was reviewed by the contractor, their engineer, their QA QC people. Even, we sent the costs on to Ontario, to the folks up in Ontario to make sure that they were on board and understood what the costs were going to be. And then we had our consultant review the costs, and then the city ultimately reviewed them. So we had a lot of steps on this project to confirm that those costs were, were valid numbers. They might seem high, but there's a lot of coordination when you have that many agencies and entities involved. I don't recall if there were other questions. I know that that was one of them, but I think there may have been one other related to this item.
Ms. Briggs, was there a question from the audience regarding item number six? Excuse me, item?
Through you, Mr. President. For item number five, we did have two questions. The first was, there have been a number of after-the-fact repairs and issues with the pier. The squealing swings need repaired. The great lawn is, needed partial dirt fill. They wondered where these issues addressed under free warranty work. And the second question was in relation to the cost of fenders and bumpers. I can reread the whole thing as well, if you'd like.
I'm not, I'm not sure that either of those questions pertain to this agenda item. The agenda item deals with the dollars that we spent on, on, with Owen Sound, but it sounds like those are questions regarding additional cost on Jackson Street Pier.
Right.
Perhaps, Mr. Klein, you can be prepared with an answer for those at a later date.
End of the meeting.
Commissioner Poole?
Audience participation at the end of the meeting.
Sure. Additional discussion. Ms. Briggs, will you call a roll on the motion?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meiner?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meiner?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Briggs, will you present item seven, please?
I think we're at six.
Excuse me, item six.
Yes, Mr. President. Item number six is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a binocular agreement with the Top Tower Optical Company Incorporated of South Norwalk, Connecticut, for coin-operated viewers at the Jackson Street Pier and Shoreline Park and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Twine?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Who could possibly object to having binoculars on the pier, Shoreline? Mr. Poole, you all right with that?
You know, if you wouldn't have messed with me, you think you're smart. I might, okay, fine, dude, you want to play? I might ask you, how did they get this, this contract on our pier? Is it the only binocular company in the country? Is it cousin of somebody that got a phone call to get it?
I can't tell you that. I can only tell you that it's going to take a while to get them because whoever we're getting them from are quarantined. They obviously are not taking the same precautions that you and I are.
Did we put it out for bids?
Mr. Klein, can you answer any of those questions?
Yes, sir. Through you, Mr. President. It is my understanding that the two binoculars that were formerly on the Jackson Street Pier, the one on Shoreline Park and the one on the Meg Street Pier have been there for years. We've never had an agreement. So since these guys were already in the city, they already have two in existence, and we were just replacing the two on the pier. We did not go out and do an RFP or anything. We were just, they worked well with our fire department as well to get the funds. And, and so this was something that we were just cleaning up, something that we didn't have an agreement in the past for.
Mr. Klein, my understanding is the fire department receives the proceeds from these, these binoculars. Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. President. They receive 40% of the proceeds for collecting the money, and the rest goes back to Tower Optical.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Klein. Additional discussion. Ms. Briggs, will you call the roll on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meiner?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meiner?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Briggs, will you present item number seven, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Item number seven is a resolution declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed JC Park Connector Trail Project, approving the specification and engineer's estimate of cost thereof, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Twine?
I move for the adoption of this resolution under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Poole?
Just ask, for the public's benefit, a little description of what, what we're buying, what we're going to do, what this is going to look like.
Mr. Klein, I think you probably have that answer.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Through you, Commissioner Poole, and the audience. The project consists of a trail that was envisioned originally in the Sandusky Neighborhood Initiative in the Bicentennial Plan that goes from the southern point of JC Park to the northern point of Whitman Weaver Park. And it kind of snakes in through the park ultimately. It was a trail that connected to Huron Park and then all the way up to the Sandusky Bay Pathway. This is, what we're getting here for this project is the, the trail, an asphalt trail that runs from the south side of the park to the north side of the park, connecting McKelvey and Osborne Streets as well with little offshoots on those. So it really provides that walking facility, that biking facility throughout the park for the residents in the neighborhood, but will eventually connect all the way through.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Additional discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Waddington?
I'd like to ask, Mr. Klein, I was out there on a litter cleanup in that area this past Saturday. I noticed a handicap ramp. It goes uphill from Osborne Street, is, is there additional work going to be done on They poured the concrete and had the handicap ramp at the bottom of Osborne Street, and that's got a pitch going on.
Through you, Mr. President, to Commissioner Waddington. That, if you are familiar with the other two entrances into the park, there were gateway signage for JC Park at those locations. At the end of Osborne Street, that is also going to be another gateway sign that is installed. We had a contractor pour the concrete in the city as we're procuring the signs in coordination with the community development. We will be installing those over the next couple weeks, several months, to make sure that all of those entrances are accommodated with the appropriate signage.
Additional discussion, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman? Simply to say a thank you to the foundation, Randall J. and Estelle M. Doran Foundation for, for paying for this. This is really a great thing for the neighborhood. I'm looking forward to when we can start tying neighborhoods together with these, with these kinds of bike paths so that kids can get from park to park. And if, this particular one is a good place to start. As long as we get it connected to Warren Street and down to, on its way down to Water Street, we will have done something very good for the interior of the city and for the neighborhoods. It's a good start, great start.
Agreed. Mr. Poole, my office is about 100 yards from JC Park, and I can tell you, there are kids there almost 24/7. You have to drive them out of there when it gets dark. It is a very, it's a well-used facility. If it's not baseball, it's basketball. It's using the Whitman Weaver end, and it gets a lot of use. It's something that's been with us for a lot of years. I hope it'll be a lot more.
Absolutely. Great city has connections. People are, that people are able to connect with each other, and that's what a small, what we need to, what we need to be working toward. Thank you.
Ms. Briggs, will you call a roll on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meiner?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And now on the resolution.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meiner?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That resolution is passed. Ms. Briggs, will you present item number eight, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Item number eight is a resolution declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with a proposed 2020 shared driveway construction project, approving the specifications and engineer's estimate of cost thereof, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Twine?
I move for the adoption of this resolution under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Poole?
This is a good project overall, in specific, the alleyway. I had some conversation with the engineer on some things that they're doing, doing with it. Looks, looks fine. I am interested in how we are going to make available and sell these lots. And is this going to be happening after the driveway construction project? Or are we going to be working in conjunction with it at the same time? Currently, we just word of mouth. Some people understand that there might be some lots available. I think there's city property that requires a formal offering. And just like, like to hear, before we vote on this, how we're going to dispose of the lots.
Mr. Webster?
Through the commission president to Commissioner Poole, and Matt, please jump in. But Director Lasko and I discussed this actually this morning because I had the same thought. And we think that we don't need a Realtor necessarily on this because there seems to be high demand, and a commission would, would take away from what we're able to gain from the sale of the properties. But that we should post on our website that they are available and make it known, and have a point of contact, which will likely be Director Lasko. And that as people come in, we want to see two things. One, that they have the ability to purchase, but also, two, that they will have the ability to build in short order. And so we want to take some time and figure out exactly what that criteria should be because what we don't want to do is have people purchase and then sit on or try to resell the lots as values go up. And so Matt and I are going to work really closely on, over the next week or two, putting that, that standard together of how we accomplish that and get that back in front of the commission and then put that out there publicly as quickly as possible. But Matt, please jump in if you have any additional detail that you'd like to add.
You stated that well. I, I did send an email reply to Commissioner Poole, but unfortunately, it was right before the meeting. So I understand that you probably did not see that, but yet. But city manager is correct. We strongly believe we do not need a Realtor. But to ensure fairness, both real, real and perceived, we want to make sure that as much as we can do to market these lots to the masses so that it does not raise questions of us picking and choosing whom these go to because we do see a high demand. And it's something we want to try to fill, but we want to fill it in the most fair way. So we will be developing a plan to publicly market these, but we do believe we can do them in-house and do them successfully.
Mr. Chairman? Tell Mr. Lasko, I did receive a reply to my, to my email. Thank you for that. The information that we make our decisions based on needs to go out to the public, which is often generally why I ask. I think it's in everyone's interest. The more people know what we're doing, the less they question what we're doing. Thank you.
Ms. Briggs, I wonder if you would, I believe we had a question, an audience question on this, agenda item number eight. I believe it was from Mr. Johnson regarding the alley. If you would read that for us, I'm sure we could develop a response for that.
Yes, Mr. President. Through you, Ms. Johnson asked, "A new development on Market, or Market Street will receive a free alleyway paid for by the taxpayers. Why are the taxpayers paying 100% of the cost when other paved alleyways, the property owner picks up 50% and the city 50% of that cost?"
Mr. Lasko, I, I think I know the answer to that, but I'm going to let you, let you explain to Ms. Johnson that no one's getting a free alley. If they were, we'd be dividing that $70,000 we're paying for this property by five and selling these lots for $14,000 apiece. So I, I think we're selling them for more than that. And if you'll explain how the arithmetic works, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, through you, commission president, to address Ms. Johnson's question. I will first acknowledge this is very atypical for us in terms of being in this role, but we thought it was really important for this project. As mentioned at last commission meeting, when we were seeking approval to purchase Mr. Siemens's lots on the southeast corner of this block, it was at that time that we thought there'd be major benefit in limiting the curb cuts on East Market Street and Franklin. And one of the ways to do that is through the construction of a private driveway that will serve the rear of the residential structures. And we don't believe it's prudent or practical for each individual property owner to construct their small portion of the property that would require you to sell the lots in a very unique way and structured way so that you're, if we sold the easternmost lot, they wouldn't be able to get to their property unless the westernmost lot's sold. So we felt very strongly that the city should take the initiative in constructing this private drive, which will ultimately be turned over to each private property residence that will own the rear of the property. And without question, the funds for this private drive are going to be recouped through the sale of the lots. So that will more than cover our purchase of Mr. Siemens's lots. It will more than cover the construction of the alley. And ultimately, that will be additional revenue that comes to the city for the sale of the lots above and beyond what our holding costs and construction costs were. So this is ultimately going to be built in. be built into the sales price, even if it's not explicitly stated.
Thank you, Mr. Lasco. Additional discussion, Commissioners? Ms. Briggs, will you call the role on the motion, please?
Yes. Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And now on the resolution.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That resolution has passed. Ms. Briggs, will you present item number nine, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Item number nine is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement, or an amendment to the agreement for professional design services with the Manic and Smith Group, Incorporated of Maunee, Ohio, for the Meg Street Reconstruction and Multi-Use Path Project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Twine?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Briggs, will you call the role on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That ordinance has passed. Ms. Briggs, will you present item number 10, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Item number 10 is a resolution authorizing the filing of a grant application with the Ohio Department of Transportation for financial assistance through the Highway Safety Improvement Program for portions of the Sineski Bay pathway included in the landing project, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with 14, or Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Waddick?
I move for the adoption of this resolution under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. I think we've worn you out. Ms. Briggs, will you call the role on the motion, please?
Yes. Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And now on the resolution.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That ordinance has passed. That concludes our regular agenda. We'll turn to our city manager for his report.
Thank you, Commission President, Commissioners, and audience. I'll start with new and old business administration. First, I'd like to request a motion to affirm the appointment of Dr. Marsha Cooper to the Erie County Board of Health. Dr. Cooper's term will be a five-year term and run through December 30th, 31st, 2025. She has asked to be reappointed, and the Health Department Director has encouraged her reappointment as well.
We have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. I got several letters of recommendation and verbal recommendations on Dr. Cooper's performance on the health board, and I thank her for being willing to do this. Again, we'll, I'll ask, I'll ask for a roll call, if we could have a roll call, Ms. Briggs, on that motion.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That motion has passed, and our thanks to Dr. Cooper.
So moving on to the police department. The police department will be participating in the Drive Sober, Get Pulled Over campaign throughout Ohio. From the 26th of this month through September 7th, we encourage visitors and citizens to always use a designated driver to save lives. For the finance department, a disconnection for delinquent water and sewer accounts will begin on Thursday, August 27th. Residents needing to make payment plans must contact customer accounting prior to August 27th. Payment plans will need to be approved by the property owner for public works. On August 31st, the intersection of Washington and Hancock will transition to a four-way stop to improve pedestrian safety and traffic flow in the area. We had direct requests from this from both nearby residents in that area, as well as the Bowling Green State University Cedar Fair School, and so engineering looked at that and made that recommendation. Also, water has been pounding in the curb ramp, crosswalk and northbound curb lane on Sycamore Line since the intersection was reconstructed a few years ago. Due to safety concerns with hydroplaning and ice freeze-up, Sycamore will be closed this week at the intersection of Cleveland Road to improve drainage. And then last week, city crews installed a peace pole along the north side of West Monroe in front of 7-Eleven. The pole was donated by the Center of Peace through Understanding and was accepted by this commission in July of last year, and the location was chosen for visibility and proximity to various neighborhoods. An unveiling ceremony is scheduled for 10:30 a.m. on September 3rd. And then for the planning department, the regular planning commission meeting for August 26th is scheduled for 4:30 p.m. The VZA meeting for September 17th is scheduled for 4:30. The regular landmark commission meeting for September 16th is scheduled for 4:30, and the arts and culture commission meeting for September 15th is scheduled for 5:15 p.m. With that, I would like to have Director Reader from the finance department just give a brief overview of where we're at in the budgeting process. We have a finance committee meeting coming up next month, where we should have a lot more detail, but wanted her to give just a very brief talk on what to expect over the next 30 days or so.
Mr. Reader, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Commission President. So we had a finance committee meeting last Friday. We discussed our 2020 budget and also our financial forecast. We're still anxiously awaiting our August receipt numbers for admission and lodging tax, as these revenues are from July. And as we all know, July was the first month that Cedar Point was open. We are also working with National Resource Network, and we anticipate having a financial forecast, I'm sorry, financial forecast presentation at our next finance committee meeting, which is September 18th. We'll have early discussion and a lot of feedback from our finance committee prior to that presentation, and if anybody else, as far as the commissioners want to weigh in, we're happy to have those discussions with you guys. We're also hopeful that the commission can join us on that finance committee meeting on September 18th as we work through our financial forecast. If anyone has comments or questions as far as our current budget, please let me know. Obviously, we do have a lot of revenue that we normally would start receiving now due to Cedar Point being open that we will not be receiving this year, but our general fund revenue at the moment is $4.1 million, which is a healthy balance. We started at $4.9 million in the general fund at the beginning of this year. A lot of that is attributed to right now, we just received our second half property tax settlement, which was $700,000. So that helped out our general fund. And like I stated, you know, we're going to be watching this closely, as the revenues that we normally would receive, we know are going to be not, not as nice this year due to Cedar Point situation and COVID-19. But if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to have conversation with anybody about the budget.
Thank you, Ms. Reader. We're anxiously awaiting that, that report from National Resource Network. I think that will shed a great deal of light on many of the, many of the things that some of us fear, and provide some clarity for us going forward also. Thank you for your work.
And that concludes my remarks for this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Have any questions to the city manager? Next item on our agenda are items of old business. Any items of old business? No items of old business. We'll turn to items of new business. Any items of new business?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Poole?
Just an observation. I got some calls from some citizens, and this is just information for the staff to consider. We put in some new change, some changes to the water department collection, and we finding out that national decisions are impacting, are going to have some impact on that. The holdup in the mail is as much as seven, eight to 10 days. So citizens are getting their water bills much later than they normally do, with a very small window to make it on time. It's not important yet, I don't believe, because we're not charging late fees, but I just want to make you aware of it so that you're prepared to start making, making adjustments. It's brought to my attention by a couple of citizens that she didn't understand. She was ready to pay her water bill. She knew it was supposed to come. Some people actually pay close attention, and called multiple times trying to find out where her water bill was, because she did not want to be, she was one of those good, good folks that wants to pay their bills. So, but that is becoming an issue with the mail. Thank you.
Additional items of new business?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Twine?
Last week, we held interviews for the police chief position. Actually, we kind of got, stopped our tracks. We had three candidates that we had chosen to interview back in March, but then the stay-at-home order kind of stopped us. So we did reinstitute those interviews. The three candidates we had chosen in March, we made contact with them, and they were still interested. So again, we did interview those people. Part of the police chief search committee is Stephen Sturgill, Ed Windau, Vince Rhodes, Mark Fogg, and myself. I think the good thing about that is we scored each candidate, and all of us on the committee, we were pretty much close on our scores with the first, second, and third candidates. We did choose two candidates to, are recommended to proceed in the interview process, and those two candidates will, it is my understanding according to our charter that they will be interviewed by the city manager. So just wanted to thank the committee, and also thank you, Commissioner Brady, for allowing, allowing me to chair that committee. I think we had some, some great candidates. Several people, of course, applied for the position, so, so again, those two candidates will be pushed forward.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Twine. Thank you for chairing that committee, and our thanks go out to your committee, Mark Fogg, Dr. Stephen Sturgill, Vincent Rhodes, and Ed Windau. You know, I've said often, and here it shows up again, so many people volunteer their time to make us a better city, and this is such an important hire. I know that none of you took this task lightly. You devoted time to it. There was a pause in there due to COVID. I'm glad that you're where we're at now and willing to submit those to Mr. Webster for his, his review and interview and selection process. Thanks for doing that. Any additional items of new business? We will turn to audience participation on any item. Ms. Briggs, you have a long list of, of questions from the, from our public.
Through you, Mr. President. We have questions from four individuals tonight. The first comes from Jackie Thatchett. She asked, "Will improvements be done to Churchwell Park? It has had the same equipment for over 20 years, and why can't we have a timer for the tiny splash pad like the other ones have?" Continuing on with the splash pad, she said, "I would like to know why the splash pad has not been turned on. I have called every department, and one gentleman said he could bring me a key so I can turn it on and off. I work over 45 hours a week and don't think it is my responsibility when there are salaried employees who can. I was understanding a group volunteered to do it, and I was told two years ago, I believe, that it was going to be made bigger and a timer added. Just want some answers on that and an upgrade to the park." The next item comes from Barbara Cicalese, and I apologize for butchering names. "I moved downtown on May 1st, and I love seeing the bay, that it's walkable and a small city, and there are so many parks. Recently, I participated in the survey about downtown Sineski and submitted my responses. Now that I've lived here a few months, below are some additional comments. With more residents living along Shoreline Drive and Market Street, it would be helpful to place a recycling container in that area. Most of the apartments have no basements or little extra storage for recyclables. The city doesn't encourage recycling. If we each have to drive to Cement Ave to offload our recyclables." Number two, "If people aren't supposed to smoke on the Jackson Street Pier to reduce maintenance time and cost, then please install signs indicating that no smoking is allowed. Signs could be attached to the existing trash cans." Number three, "While I realize motorcyclists have a right to ride on Shoreline Drive, last weekend was hell for residents along Shoreline. My apartment windows look down on Shoreline, and on a nice summer evening, I would like to leave my windows open. So many cyclists had their radios on full blast that it was impossible to have the windows open. Anecdote, I called the non-emergency police number at about 10:30 p.m. on Saturday, August 8th to complain. The female dispatcher was dismissive and said a police car could not sit at the pier waiting for offenders. I understood that, but a policeman could have issued warnings or tickets every five minutes that night. After I hung up and the dispatcher wasn't inclined to help me, I looked out my window and saw a police car passing a motorcyclist with his radio blasting. No action was taken by the police. I know there is a noise ordinance, and it should be enforced. If these issues were resolved, they would make it a more inviting location and encourage more people to live downtown." Then the next item comes from Rick and Arlene Wall, and Arlene wrote this. "I want to apologize in advance if I, you know, miss say anything. It's in cursive and a little bit hard for me to read." To the city commissioners, we are Rick and Arlene Wall. "We have lived at 916 West Jefferson Street for the past 44 years. We are writing this in regards to the bar previously named The Dog House, now known as Amaria's Turn. It is located at the corner of Jefferson and McDonough Streets. With the new owners, many problems have increased, such as fights, two people were shot, loud music coming from cars that continuously travel up and down West Jefferson Street, patrons park in front of our home, and other neighbors playing extremely loud music, blaring. Patrons are noisy, yelling, and littering in yards. This past Saturday night, women were being very loud, passing an alcoholic bottle around in their parked car. They were running and screaming back and forth to the bar. We did call the police on this. We called the police again after the same woman came back from the bar because Rick saw one of the females remove her pants and urinate in our front lawn. Bar patrons loiter outside after the bar closes. They block neighbors' driveways, and our neighbors many times cannot find parking spaces near their home. Patrons pack the bar, not wearing masks, certainly not observing COVID-19 practices. We are very concerned about the lack of social distancing inside the bar. It truly needs to be investigated. None of these problems existed before the bar opened. These people are irresponsible and do not care about anyone else. We do thank our police department for their help in coming out whenever they are called. Also, many thanks go to Mr. Webster for doing a great job bringing back our city, concerned and frustrated citizens." for doing a great job bringing back our city, concerned and frustrated citizens. Finally, the last one comes from Mr. Tim Schwanger. He said, the planning department is overlooking state and local requirements downtown businesses offer alcohol sales and outdoor consumption are required to fence or other means in their outdoor areas designated for alcohol consumption. The planning department's answer when questioned was, and quote, "The state has relaxed fenced in-area rules due to the COVID-19 pandemic." According to the Ohio Liquor Control Board documents, fenced areas for consumption have not been relaxed." And he provided a website. It's https://www.com.ohio.gov/liqr/fragment-5.
Is that it, Ms. Briggs?
That is it.
I think there's something in there for everybody. It seems like, Mr. Klein, I wonder if you could prepare a response, both perhaps privately and publicly, on the splash pad, which was one of the first questions. And if you would also perhaps deal with the question on signs on smoking. It appears that there's something in there for the police regarding this issue at the tavern on West Jefferson Street. I wonder if we can get some type of a response to those nice people and their neighborhood problem. And also, perhaps the planning department can respond to Mr. Schwanger. And we can do that both privately and publicly. I think we have a way of posting the answers to those questions online also, I believe.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Twine?
It's funny that they brought up about the doghouse. I just gave information to the police chief this afternoon. I had a Mr. Sloan call me, and he said they can't even sit in their porch at night, like 7:00, 8:00 o'clock at night, and then cars do block the driveways. And he didn't want to... I guess he's repeatedly called the police department, and John knew the name when I talked to him this afternoon. But if they're parking 50, 60 cars in a neighborhood, that's not good. And I guess they hang outside quite a bit. You know, I don't know personally, I'm going by what I've talked to two residents on. This confirms what this lady, you know, brought to us.
It looks like there may be a role in there for the Health Department also, if this portrayal is accurate in lack of social distancing. So perhaps we could involve the Health Department in that issue also. I understand solitude in neighborhoods are extremely important to our residents. It's important to all of us. So I know there is a rule there that places establishments like this can only have so many infractions when we start charging them, but perhaps we can review where we are with that establishment. They've had multiple infractions.
Absolutely. And Chief Borzak?
Commissioner Brady?
Yes.
If I could touch on those topics so that all of the commissions are aware. The establishment has only been open for a few months. There's been a number of incidents there. We have cited quite a few folks for sound amplification from vehicles. We've had OVIs from there. More importantly, I guess, so that the commission knows, we've been very proactive with this establishment. It is affecting the quality of life. We have been in contact with the state Ohio Investigative Unit. We have forwarded reports, as we had them in the past, and along with any ones that come in. They have already sent a hearing notice to the establishment, the liquor permit holder. There are several issues with that. So due to the COVID issues, the hearing notices, they're taking priorities. So it's probably going to be several months. But we are proactively trying to get that under control. They are in the nuisance ordinance. They have been notified. The problem hasn't been corrected, and they have started receiving billing for that and actually came down and paid a bill today. So anytime we're there in the next year, we'll keep sending them a bill. And we're doing as much as we can proactively to address the concerns. And I know it's very frustrating as we've had incidents like this in the community in the past, but this particular place is in a very densely populated neighborhood. So we are doing everything within our power to try to get it taken care of, and we will continue to do so.
Thank you, Chief Borzak.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Twine?
I've got a couple of specific questions and then just a general recommendation or request, I suppose. One deals with the dismissiveness of the dispatcher. Chief, if you could at some point, find out what is the dispatcher's actual role here with regard to, do they receive phone calls and then dispatch someone to go take care of it? Or do they have some authority to dicker with the caller about whether or not a call is worthy of sending an officer? And I don't need an answer now. I'd just like if you would go in and investigate that. And I'm sure that this young lady's call was on tape, so you can hear what it is. But it occurs to me that this is about, what's the role of the dispatcher? Debating with me whether or not I need help or should get it, or simply passing it on to someone to come and look at my problem. So that was one. The other, just the MacArthur Park issue dealing with the splash pad, and would like someone to put some specific attention to that. I did actually talk to the lady who put in that in the question. And our need to save money or invest in buying, we plan to do something else with the property long-term. Between now and then, those folks can't wait 10, 8, 5 years for their kids to have a decent place to play. So I'd like some attention put to that. In general, it occurred to me, would it be possible? We have getting so many questions now that Ms. Briggs, and some of the time you do send our, these questions out ahead of time so that we can look at them. As she reads them off, it's impossible to remember what they are, remember all the information. And additionally, perhaps the same way that she posts the consent agenda, that you can simply, as you're reading this, you can have it up on the screen for people to see.
Sure.
If that would not be too onerous of a request.
In fairness, I know for a fact that oftentimes, we get these questions an hour before the meeting too. So, but I think that's a good suggestion, and I don't see why you can't do that.
Absolutely. Appreciate that. That makes sense. Thank you.
Additional discussion, Commissioner? Now, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.